This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, a little call meeting in order. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm blocking everyone and keep Brandon in your thoughts and prayers. Her back is killing her, so if she stands up, she's not getting violent, but she's just trying to get some relief.
Thank you.
What does that say? We need to approve our agenda. Is there any changes for this?
Mr. Chairman, on our general business regarding the McPherson auction request, in parentheses, I have Thursday, that should be Friday. And then I would note at 9:30, the Frank Pavich final plat, 2025-26, has been pulled. And then, looking at the third page of the agenda, at 10 o'clock, there was going to be a public hearing, a board of adjustments matter variance that has been pulled, will come back a different day. And I would note that, I think, I know that Chris Engler is going to come in during items from the public and discuss Higginsville Road, the first mile, speed limits. They're bringing that up for the changes.
Want to approve the agenda as minutes, second? Second by journey, second by Tisdale, for approval of the agenda. All those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We have any conflicts?
Oops.
Okay. We need approval of the meeting minutes from May 27.
Motion approved.
Sorry, guys.
Okay, motion in a second for approval. All those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I don't have any questions on the bills. Does anyone else?
I do not.
No. Need to pay the bills.
Okay, motion in a second for approval. All those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
All those who motion carry. Personnel, Brandon.
Yes, I have, I believe it's two. And this here is for the treasurer's office. This is for the hire that was approved at the last meeting. For Rachel Baird, yeah, correction, oh, correction, I put county employee one, grade one, base pay of $22.33 and the start weight will be 619, not 618.
Motion to approve the board's office request.
Aye. Okay, motion in a second for approval. All those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
And then this here is for general government buildings. This is just a temporary position. The employee that Tim hired unfortunately fell and broke his leg, so was not able to work. So Robert Mattson, who has just recently retired, graciously has offered to come back and help Tim out until Disney Meyer can get back. So this will be a custodian maintenance worker, two, grade three, base pay of $24.21. It's supposed to be a halftime temporary position effective on 6/9.
You approve. Sorry, guys.
Okay, motion in a second for approval. All those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Still ahead for personnel, Jeremy.
All right, do we have any travel requests?
I do not have any.
Auditor's account with the treasurer. Looks like it's you again.
So this is also May 31st, 2025. Full amount of deposits in the bank says $29,588,640.75. Included in that balance is our bank balance, $28,498,840.26, money market, $1,089,849.49. Total amount of actual cash is $1,350. Total amount of checks and drafts in treasurer's possession not exceeding three days of $66,266.71. Amount of cash, $6,528.59. Petty cash, $2,725. For a total of $29,665,511.13.
Move to approve of the account with the treasurer.
Second. Okay, motion in a second to approve the auditor's account with the treasurer. All those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And we have an abatement, correct?
Yeah.
All right, Ms. Brett, you have the floor.
Mr. Brown here? Yes, he is. All right, come on up. Actually, you can sit down and I'll just, I'll start and then you can
Okay, can I get you to speak loud again?
Absolutely.
In the heart of your evening, what you're sharing.
Uh, so Mr. Brown is applying for an abatement for the veteran's exemption. He, uh, so, and that is a reason that you can't apply for abatement. It's at the bottom, applicant is a veteran who would otherwise qualify for it, and he does. Uh, but failed to comply with the application deadline, uh, which was November 1st. He moved into his house in September 20th of 2024. The application deadline was November 1st. He applied
One correction, I'm from New Mexico, excuse me. We closed on their house on 22nd, or 22 September.
Yeah.
But I didn't get, I couldn't move up here with civil service down there. I could not move, uh, here until 31 October is when I got here. And our household goods got delivered on 5 November. And I actually thought the submission date was 18 November.
Oh, okay.
Apparently even wrong on that one. I didn't get it in.
You got it in November 25th.
Yep.
So you got it in November.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So he got it in November 25th. Um, so that is why he applied for an abatement, so.
Chairman of the board, I want to approve the abatement. Second. Okay, motion in a second. Will you approve the abatement? All those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. We haven't passed something forward this way when they did that. I don't know why we should start now.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
We're okay. Reproach you.
Mr. McPherson?
Yeah. So this, yeah, he is here.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Kevin McPherson's here. And as I referenced earlier, request again this year to close the parking ramp on Friday, the 13th. And then, of course, on Saturday as well. This will be one of two events that Mr. McPherson will be coming for you to ask that the first four of the parking ramp be closed. And then we have alternative parking for employees and state employees up on the top level of parking ramps, which are really well.
Okay, question for the board?
So that's, you're talking about two days from now, three days from now?
Yes.
Is there a reason they didn't come in a little earlier than this?
Uh, originally, I, I heard from Mr. McPherson that day last week, and then I heard from Tabitha Espinoza on May 27th. So that was after your last meeting. And so this is the first opportunity I've had to present it to you. And this is the same meeting, I think, that you've considered it, uh, in the past as well. The timing is very similar.
Yeah, you know, and, uh, certainly on our side, we, we appreciate all the, the extra spots here in the, in the parking garage. This weekend, of course, is not near as chaotic as the one in August. As everybody in here knows, the one in August is, is really But we'll have, uh, we'll have close to 75 vehicles for Saturday, so it'll, it'll fill up in there. Go Deadwood Nights will be, will be a big deal. And, and I guess, if it's appropriate at this time, I'd, I'd like to throw out the idea of if we can possibly get, with the changes going on, I think there's maybe 10 spots that we could acquire for the August auction, which would be a bigger deal than for this weekend. So I'm just throwing it out there. If, if it's appropriate, the commission could think about that and then we'll, you guys, you can decide or
Okay, I can explain. And so I think what Kevin is referring to is, is those spots formerly occupied by the sheriff's office, obviously, they're, they're gone now. And so what we've done is we moved all the pool vehicles into those spots, so equalization, vitamin zone, et cetera. And so what Kevin is asking for is that those, those spots, if not for this event, at least for the next event, that they be available as well. And so I mean, I talked to Tim Eganaw about it. We can make arrangements to get them out of the ramp, um, if that's what your prerogative is.
Well, we've got some time to think on that one.
If that's appropriate, I'd, I'd throw that out there for the August and then we'll, uh, I'll, I'll come and meet with you again at that time for Go Deadwood Nights. And this weekend, we'll be fine with, with what we have generally.
Okay, motion for the board.
A little approval.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing that, all those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, sir.
Once again, thank you and have a wonderful day.
All right. Airplane barbecue, Bruce, you want? Mr. Chairman, here, back is an email from, this, this from the mayor, from John Senden, inviting the permission to barbecue at the airport on Tuesday, June 24th, at 6:00 AM. The purpose is to discuss current improvements and future improvements as well, and I think just maybe be reacquainted again with the airport. What's been going on out there?
6:00 PM.
Yes. And so if you're interested, uh, let me know, please, I'll RSVP. And then I may have to do a notice of quorum as well for the three or more of you.
I will do that that day.
I hope that day too.
Me too.
I can come, yeah.
Are you gonna go right here?
Yeah, I'll go.
I'll let him know, Brandon?
Uh, I'm not sure. Do we have a commission meeting that day? Is that what you just said?
Oh, yeah, before.
Oh. Yeah, we better, because I've got stuff going on that weekend. It's gonna make Monday tough, but
Well, if anybody else, let me know.
I was wondering about that. It's like, that better not be that weekend. Yep, it is.
On 24th, Tuesday, your next commission meeting, remember, is on Monday, the 23rd.
Okay, so we finished up our general business, so we're down to our sheriff. It's not here, but, but his honorable next in charge is
Yep. Nothing for the board? You don't have anything for me?
No issues, no problems?
No, it, well, there's always something, right? Yeah, I've gotta be honest, but no, it's been good.
Okay.
How many cells do you have? Full up on the, um?
I believe this morning we're at 91.
91?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Motel's actually, you can light on it.
Yep.
That's close to a whole time high, isn't it?
Uh, I think we ended up at 94 at one point.
All right, any questions for?
Thanks for coming. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Um.
Yes, you.
I'm here. Come on up.
All right. First of all, thank you for having me. Um, I'm nervous. This is my first official meeting, so
Don't be nervous, we're just
Okay, okay. All right, so, uh, my name is Audrey Pruitt. I am the new Butte Lawrence County 4-H educator. I came on full time three weeks ago, two weeks ago. Um, I was able to get started a little bit early. I was a teacher in Balfour, so I had to finish out my contract. Um, so, but I came on, we were off on Fridays, so I was working some Fridays and after school events and stuff like that. So, um, I am, uh, I just wanted to introduce myself today and kind of give you, I've only had two weeks to kind of figure out what's going on. But, uh, we've been working to get acquainted with families and meet people. Um, I actually got to attend a club meeting last night and introduce myself to the club. And we've got several events coming up. We've got our Butte Lawrence County Horse Show coming up at Seven Downs Arena on June 24th. We had to reschedule the 4-H rodeo. It's going to be on July 11th at the Black Hills Rodeo Roundup Grounds. And, uh, July 18th, we have several kids that are going to be competing in a local dog show. Um, we have static workdays coming up for them to work on projects for the fair. And, uh, let's see what else. I've been working with the fair board to make sure that we get everything ready for that. Um, my future plans for Lawrence County especially, Lawrence County only has four clubs at the moment. Bell has about 10 or 11. Um, so I really want to work on building up Lawrence County. Um, I would love to one day be able to hand that back off to somebody else. Not that I don't love being here, but I want to see 4-H grow. It's very important to me. So I have, uh, plans on coming to Lead Live to have a booth set up and kind of introduce myself to the community up there. Um, I've already been talking to teachers in Spearfish about what I can do at the schools there. So being a teacher, I kind of have it in that way. Um, but basically, I'm working hard to build up the program, so
Sounds like it's refreshing to have someone local that knows the community, so we welcome that and thank you for accepting the
Absolutely. I do have a question for you. Um, what would you guys, uh, you all, like to see for 4-H in the county?
Like to see 4-H in the county?
You'd like to see it? Okay, okay, all right.
Yeah, I think it helps.
Yeah.
For all.
Yeah. I met a gentleman last night in Spearfish. He had, was donating some leatherworking stuff. And, um, he was very excited that the things were taking off. He didn't grow up around here, but his mom was huge in 4-H. And so he did all the big trips and all that kind of thing when he was a kid. And he was very excited to see that we were trying to grow the program, so
My grandkids are all in 4-H. It's, it's a good, it's a good program.
Yep, yep.
Certainly something that has evolved over the years, involved a lot of new, uh, kids, you know, like, yeah, shooting sports and the
That's what got us
A lot of those things.
Yep, that's what got us into it.
Continue on with that.
Yep.
Hopefully we can get better participation and, uh, teach you some more life skills.
Yep, yep. All right, well, that's all I have. Thank you all very much.
We're running a little early, if you don't mind.
That's good.
Well, you have the floor when you're ready, sir.
Okay, I don't really have much for you all today, but, uh, we do have a, a request by the Dakota Society of American Foresters. They want to, uh, do a field trip. It's in September. They have supplied us with a, an insurance document listing Lawrence County as a, as a cert certificate holder. They're just wanting to be able to, you know, utilize our right of way out there near the county line where the experimental forest is. They, they plan on doing a day field trip and taking some samples and things like that. So, uh, I, I didn't have an issue with it. I did ask them that nothing would be allowed to be parked on the road or on the edge of the road. They, you know, most of their parking, they reached out to me saying would be actually on their property or on that experimental forest property. But, uh, there would be some people walking back and forth along that road ditch. So I do have their, uh, insurance information and the document to be signed, and I, I don't have an issue with it if you guys don't.
Okay, would you need authorization for John to sign it or?
For you to sign, so moved.
Second. Okay, we have motion in a second for approval of the chairman's signature. All those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
This next, uh, approach permit that this has got to do with the property out there off of the North Rochford Road, and it is, uh, Black Hills Properties, part of Powderhouse Pass. Um, there's kind of some confusion. They, they, they sent in for a permit. I didn't like the site distances. They, they have since, uh, submitted a second permit.
Is this the one that we denied last meeting?
Well, no, but this is one I reached out to, uh, planning and zoning, and they felt that there were some issues previously with the commission on whether we would even allow an approach in this area and whether this property would be commercial or not. This is for some storage units along the North Rochford Road. So before, at this time, I'm not asking for approval of either of these. I'm just asking your guys' guidance and your, uh, your thoughts on whether this is something we should even go forward with. My concern is how many accesses we can allow off a highway. You know, it's the same problem you see down on, on, uh, Hillsview Drive, where there's all that, all the turnoffs or driveways. I think you said it's a 50 mile an hour highway. This is a 50 mile an hour speed there. I think we need to watch and start restricting. I mean, they, it, it butts up against the Brown, well, they're on the Brownsville in the south, but they'd have done this one acre, went off a block for us, they'd have been better off. But I, I think there's some poor planning going on that's gonna result in a lot of turns off the highway that don't need to be there and probably wouldn't be recommended by state and federal regulation. Uh, the original one they sent in, the site distance to the south is not, you know, does not meet the requirement for 50 mile an hour. So since they have sent another one, moving it further down, but then that includes onto the Brownsville Road, which that, that comes into play with our distance between approaches. So, um, I, I would like to reach back out to them and explain that our position is that we don't recommend this approach and that they should utilize their own property for this, you know, approach to this, these lots, so
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a, a motion in a second to, uh, allow John to
Follow the recommendation.
Follow that. All those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And we have a couple permits from Celerity again. Um, I did include the languages. Um, I did also include the, uh, language of a bond, if you guys see fit. Um, and it's as opposed to adding at a later date. Uh, the bond would be for $57,200. They have supplied bonds for the last two projects they did at your guys' request, so, um, this would be for, uh, I got two permits. One was, you know, for Brookview Road and one for Camp Comfort. That's the area they're currently working on. If you guys are okay with the, the previous language as far as, uh, conditions and, and if you would like the bond as well, like we have in the last two, I would recommend that we go ahead with these, follow recommendation.
Sorry.
Okay, we have motion in a second for approval. All those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Um, I do have the settlement from our surplus auction. We did make, uh, $18,875 off of the, the two old pickups and the one, uh, dump truck that we sold. And then all of the signs, the signs were, were pretty good. We made $7,775 off of all the signs and signposts. I do have the settlement to, so the auditor can have a record of that. I have not got the check yet for it though. I think that brings a total of our last two sales. I, it's like 90,000 that we made off of the last two sales we had with them from October to, uh, to this one in May. So it offsets the price of our new truck we bought with, but when you throw in the VW grant we have, we're, we're, uh, we're kind of in the black. We got a free truck out of all of our, between our grant and selling all of our old clean one owner vehicles. It's like in a household with nine kids. One owner, nine kids. And, uh, the only other thing I have is, um, we ran into some issues. We, the permit we issued to, uh, to, uh, keying resources up on the Terry Summer Road, they've, they have not been able to bore under the road. It's, became too much. They did request to open trench the road. I told them I wouldn't give them that permission at this time without some bonds in place and, and some sort of traffic control plan, which they did try to submit. They, they, they fell short. Uh, since then, they have withdrawn that application and they've decided to go a different route. I got that call yesterday, so we don't have anything to do with that anymore. So other than that, I don't have anything. If you guys don't have anything for me.
I got a text this morning or yesterday, I'll just share with you, from Mrs. Baird. Uh, obviously, you put up a minimum maintenance sign. She thinks the sign should say no outlet, not minimum maintenance, and just letting you know.
But there is Where's that at?
Down Boywood.
Or has she's with the cattle guard?
Yeah, the same.
On the section line road?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm just sharing it with you while we're through. Uh, it's entirely up to you how you want to handle it.
I'll
To the need more showing flying, right, or essentially around
Well, it's just, it's just that issue of pasture and fence and
Yeah, I think this is all in our county.
We were out there, I think.
Yeah.
Remember that?
It's the, yeah.
They've been given direction on what they need to do to go forward, and I don't know that they have done that yet.
No, it started and stopped.
I think the minimum maintenance, uh, was part of the requirement, if I remember, to allow them to, uh, to improve that section line, which the improvement of the section line is, could use a lot more improvement. It's a pretty, pretty rough road, but, um, I will, uh, I'll have a look at it and we'll see what we can come up with there.
Any other, uh, questions or?
Nope.
Question?
How is the new truck equipped?
Uh, right now, it's not equipped at all. It's just a cabin chassis. It was just delivered, uh, a week ago. It is now over at Northern Truck, where they're gonna start to install the components. They did, uh, when I, I went down and looked at it and visited with them, they had, they had some of the stuff on hand to, to make it into a fifth wheel truck so we can use it to, to haul our belly dumps and, and things like that, which will probably, our plan is to do throughout the summer months. And then we'll take it back down in the fall for them to install the snow equipment.
Okay, thank you.
John, I don't know that I have that in share yet. You make sure I get the, whatever improvements we put on it as well?
Correct. And I don't really have any paperwork yet from, on the truck. You know, it was just delivered to, uh, the Mack dealership a week ago. So I, we just, all's we got was the invoice that, that was turned in. So as soon as I get any other type of title work, I'll get it to you right away.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Have a wonderful day.
You too.
You can talk about your policy. Brandon, you wanna? Have a vision about the budget.
Just, um, uh, for your information, the board will review the budgets on the afternoon of June 23rd and July 22nd. And, um, I will be, um, working on your budget, um, books and get them to you hopefully by the end of this week.
When will the public hearing be scheduled?
September 2nd.
That's the last day to do it.
No, you get to do it in a month.
Right.
Yeah, you have to hold it on that day, but you can continue, yeah, yeah. But it has the hearing has to be held on that day.
We're gonna take a five minute break so that Edward can get down here.
Okay.
They don't have any time for drinks on the rest of this, do they?
No. I, I think, uh, Mr. Diver, one coming up with that first plat, so I'm gonna go get him. I'll
He's here. He's, like, he popped in a little while ago.
He's a bit of a dingo, exactly. So I'm gonna turn the recording off for now until we start again.
Just making sure, cause sometimes.
So are we on?
Now we're on.
Okay, which plat do you want to go to first?
Um. I do that like once. Oh my goodness.
We're gonna miss two recordings.
Okay, so the first plat is off, so the twenty-two, five, twenty-six is off. We don't have that plat. Um. No, we're skipping that one cause he's not here yet. Gotcha. Do you remember which? So I have third, um, twenty-five, thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-five.
Then I think I have the, the one for Deer Mountain.
Okay, so let's do Deer Mountain first. Look at that one. That's twenty-seven, twenty, twenty-five, twenty-seven.
Yep.
That'd be Deer Mountain.
Right.
Um, and this one is block eight one revised of Deer Mountain and I'm gonna let Randy explain it cause he did such a good job of planning and zoning.
All right. Name for the record, Rand, Randy Diabert, uh, professional mapping and surveying, seventeen fifteen Scott Avenue, rural Lawrence County, South Dakota. Uh, you remember a few weeks ago, you vacated a public right of way up here, Tansey Trail? And so this is a boundary plat incorporating that into the lot. So there's no question about that not being part of the title, no question about setbacks. It just cleans it up. So that's all it is. It takes block in, includes Tansey Trail and makes it A-one revised.
Okay.
Motion approved.
Fire. Okay, motion by Tinsdale, seconded by Jennings for approval. All those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
Thanks, Randy.
Yeah.
What? Don't, Randy.
Now we're gonna.
So this one is for Kevin Malone and he is just moving the lot line between the two lots that he. Hold on, I'm on the other one, that's thirty-four. Thirty-three. This one's just a lot in the subdivision.
This final plating?
Yeah, final plating. It's, it's a preliminary and final because it is moving the lot line just a tad from the original.
And it's up against the green spaces, I correct?
So it was, we just had him do a new preliminary, just so it matched. There's no, no, um, structures or anything on it.
Both approve, seconded.
Motion by Tinsdale, seconded by Tinsdale for approval. All those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Thirty-four.
Um, was that for the preliminary and the fight?
Yes.
Okay.
Next one was Kevin Malone.
Four is Kevin Malone and this one is just, he's moving the lot line between the two lots that he owns. Um, it was mainly, I don't really know why. There's a little tiny corner back here. He just went around this existing garage that kind of fits and it gives a little more room on the backside of this lot. It's just this little tiny piece right here. Goes from here to here.
Hmm, I, I don't understand what, but I guess I don't really need to.
I don't know if it's gonna help him with setbacks at all. I don't, I'm not really sure.
Both approve.
I need to do it, but, sorry. Uh.
Yeah, I'll second it for further discussion.
What did you say about exempt?
This one would be exempt.
So you need the motion.
Yes.
Motion to move as exempt.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to make it exempt. All those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
Put in order. Isn't there, don't they already have a fire plan in place?
They do, because we made him do, um, the new preliminary. We don't make him, cause usually a preliminary plat has to have a fire, new fire plan with it. They don't have to, cause this is under the old fire plan and stuff.
That's what I was thinking. Is it really exempt or is it just?
I think it is.
Last one would be the same way, wouldn't it?
Uh, what was the last one? The Deer Mountain?
I think we decided just to be safe on some.
Yeah, some of them.
Okay, we did have an original motion for approval.
Yes, just.
Who made it and say?
It's asleep.
I did.
Okay. All those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. And one hundred and thirty-five, remember?
Right, this is your last one, right? You have, you have this one? So this one, um. They may show up later, but I think I can, I can, what they're doing with this one is, this is at the very end of Brighter Day subdivision, so two bit and then Brighter Day. Um, John Matson has the rest, basically the remaining of acreage for sale up there. It's a hundred and ninety acres total. Um, his grandson Brett would like to build a house on the top part of this and, but in order to do it, basically Brett just didn't want ten acres to do it. It was just too much. So we put the rest of the load. So he's asking to break it off into two. Lot two is five, yeah, five acres exactly. And he'd like to put his house on there, but they left the remainder. So we asked him, could you at least platter the remainder into a lot?
Part four.
Yep, part four. So then that way we don't have this, you know, it was a portion of this and a portion of this and there was a bunch of little remainders. So we asked him to platter it all into a lot. So we did. So we have lot one and lot two. Lot two will have a house on it and, um, they are currently trying to work with the road district because it has a current road district on the, the piece they could, they're gonna use to get to it. So we've kind of told them we can do this part, but with that, we'll have to be signed by the road district before we can record it. And there was no work to be done. If you kind of know the top of that hill, there's not much left. These aren't it, so.
Okay. And we approve the preliminary and final plat, uh, continued upon the road districts deciding to, signing off on it. Second. For the motion to second for approval of the preliminary and the final, uh, as, uh, well as once the road district is signed up. All those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried. All right.
You guys are amazing. Thank you. See you guys later. Thank you.
You wanna go back to the top?
Yeah.
Very smug here, so we, should we just keep working on our plats?
I know. I know there were, pretty certain there'll be people here from the thirty-six layout plan.
All right, so we're on twenty-eight?
Yes.
Well, when we do give them that layout one, there will be no public discussion on that because it's not a public hearing. So if someone wants to comment, they can do that at the end of our.
Okay.
For, uh, for items.
That's fine.
What's there at twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight. It should be for spring run estates. This is just a final lot inside that subdivision. Um, lot matches the preliminary. There's no changes to it. Spring run estate is Wenzels.
Move deeper.
Okay, I'll second it. Uh, any further discussion? Second, all those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried. Twenty-nine, Ember.
This one is, I think we decided, you said the name's Fab, instead of Eva Simon. Um, this one is Paradise Acres. They're combining two and, three and four. Yeah, three and four. Combining two lots into one. There's no infrastructure on it, so we did not require any preliminary because the originals match the lots. They're just combining two of them.
Move the approval.
Second. Okay, motion by sleep, seconded by Tinsdale for approval. All those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried.
Yeah.
I'll move the bigger exempt. Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to make it exempt. All those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Kind of getting the cart behind the horse, huh? Front of the horse.
All right, this one.
Thirty?
Yep, thirty. So this one is just another lot line change. These guys have moved these lot lines around so many times. Um. Just lot line here is the original lot line running right down here. They're just tweaking it a little bit. I, I don't get it.
Move to make exempt.
All right. Okay, motion in a second to make it exempt. All those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried. I can't make a motion.
All approved and approved.
Proved for our final.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of the final. All those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried. Right, close.
This one, they are combining the lot, um, into one. The only thing with this one, the, and you guys saw it in your packets, the Forest Service did send, um, they've been, you know, whenever they have comments, they try to send an email to us and they commented on the forty-foot emergency egress access that they put on this plat. It's as dedicated to this plat. Um, basically they're saying that that. Obviously they can't stop it from being on the plat, but it, there is no access there because it goes on to Forest Service ground and they're saying there is no access. There is a trail there. If someone really needed to get out, they're probably gonna go down that trail, I think is what this landowner is looking at, you know? Cause there is a trail there. It's just not a actual access.
Cause he needs a form of escape due to a fire for the fire line.
He, no, there was, so this is one of those, Tomincola Ridge subdivision was done. Two thousand five, six, somewhere in there. There just hasn't been a lot of development. Um, when I went back and looked at it, it looks like there was a lot line in there. Um, I think they're just trying for safety wise. They don't need to do anything because it's already an existing lot. They're just combining. Lots. I think it's also just for his own.
Accessorily as a play here as far as we're concerned.
Well, cause it's a, it's a emergency egress. They're dedicating it on this plat. They can, but it's Forest Service is in, recognize it going on to their property.
It's normal.
Commissioner.
It's not. And that, we may have a discussion with Commissioner, Senator Diabert on that because Black Hills National Forest was established prior to, it's RS two four seven seven. The section lines we recognize as the state were in existence prior to the establishment of the Forest Service. So they can say they don't want them on our, on their plats, but I would suggest that the state has the right to put them there. We, we recognize them whether they do or they don't.
But they say it every time.
I've not seen that before. I hadn't seen that language till this letter where they say we want that off the plat. I've never seen that.
They've never, I guess they've been having an argument. That's a different. This particular one, there was two comments in there. This Garth Olson plat is because of the easement.
That, that easement that goes on, that old, it's an old fire trail. But the other one, they wanted the section line removed from the plat. No.
Basically the surveyor told me they, I'm not taking this section.
Well, we, we specifically required that they have to show up on the map, so.
But this one was specifically to the easement. If they want to have an easement across their property, I think they can. Whether Forest Service allows it to go on to theirs, I, I don't know if that really is a part of the plat, I guess.
Well, I'll, I'll go a step further. You're required to have access to public land, period.
Kind of what they're doing.
I mean, there is other, I su- I suspect there's other access to that public ground, but under, or, or under state law, you're required to have access to public ground, public access to public land.
But you only have to walk across it. You don't have to drive.
But you have to have an easement. You have to have a way to get across there that's legally accepted.
Just walking.
Could be.
That's why, there's, there's not a trail there or anything. They just, they're just showing it on the plat so that if there's ever a question, there is access to that Forest Service across their lots.
Academic discussion on something that wouldn't have taken this long if we'd have just said, motion to approve.
Yeah.
Was that a motion?
That was a motion.
Okay.
Can we have a second?
Do we need to make this exempt?
Yes, please.
That was a motion to make it exempt from the fire plan.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to make it exempt. All those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
Aye.
Oh, you're opposing it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just the fire plan, exempt from the fire plan.
Oh, okay. I would oppose that then. Cause I got the same kind of position of mine where I bordered the private land of the Forest Service and that, and if you go walking across there, well, that's, uh, all right with them, but they can't do it any other way.
Okay, uh, you. Original motion to?
No, no, I just did the fire plan.
Okay.
All right, so did you make that or not?
No, not, no. No, not, no.
Thanks, Richard.
Move to approve the preliminary and the final. Well, second it, any discussion? Question or sleep, would you like to comment?
Well, I, I know what they allow on ours and then they, and they don't allow those sort of things, so. Uh, to have it allowed for the public while you're, you're putting your, sick in your neck out.
So we're not, so, we're not recognizing the trail as access across the Forest Service.
Oh, he's just putting an easement across his own personal lot to get to Forest Service. What they do when they get on the Forest Service ground, they guess is between the Forest Service and whoever's on that ground. You know, if they're walking or they're, they catch it with an ATV, that's kind of on them, not on, not on this.
Right, that's a possibility. Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval. All those who are favoring the motion will say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
Now what do you want to do, Amber?
We have one more plat on here, we can use the, um, thirty-two, one twenty-five, thirty-two.
Yes, there it is.
This one is, so I'm still kind of trying to wrap my head around this one. They are plating a private, a public right-of-way and a private driveway easement in Paradise Acres four. I asked why, cause we just don't see this very often where they just platter roads and they said it has something to do with M D U and Black Hills power is now requiring the easements to be planted before they'll put power in. And I haven't quite wrapped my head around that yet, but that was the reason they gave us as to why they're plating just the road.
And explain the motion from planning and zoning. The motion was that, uh, they approve the preliminary and final plat on this, provided that Maitland Partners keep ownership in it at all times.
So it's not a planted right-of-way, it's an easement.
It was maintenance.
Oh, maintenance.
Basically that the county was never gonna take on maintenance of this road.
No, I think I had ownership because I was worried about taxation. Who's gonna pay the taxes on?
Well, I don't think you guys have that authority to do that when it's planted, so she'll have to take the right way out. If it's dedicated to the public, it comes off the tax rules.
So we're plating something that's already dedicated to the public?
Yes, because you, it was dedicated in the original plat. So the plat that you guys approved for the subdivision was a dedicated public right-of-way, so the property lines do not go to the center of the road, that's how you approved it. Now all they're doing is actually plating the right-of-way.
So you're saying the preliminary shows it this way?
Yes, they're just plating just the right-of-way, not the road, no, not the lots around it. Normally we would see the lots and the road.
Two different, two different methods of doing the same thing. And that's why I keep trying to get the city of Spearfish to do eased right-of-way. Like where they're trying to get more ground, more right-of-way for the highway, like Little Bell Highway. Because otherwise if they plot that, somebody has to own that. And county's business is sixty-six feet.
The city's going at it hard.
But if they did easement, we have the right to use it, the city would have the right to use it, but we wouldn't have to take ownership of it. But we do this both ways and these kind of things, I'll make the motion to approve. Uh.
You want the clarification on that?
I'm trying to figure out, yeah, if I should.
Let me pull up.
There you go. Make the motion to follow recommendation and I'll use the wording from planning and zoning.
I just, we just had it.
I don't, not when we're doing right-aways, I don't think.
Yeah, we put it in there just because we didn't know if you wanted to or not, it's kind of a weird, we aren't gonna have a fire plan on the right-of-way anyways.
The caveat that the county will not take over and maintain right-aways inside the subdivision.
Mr. Chairman, and you do have the language on the Ganyar Plats, it cites eleven, three, twelve, that says that just because the county approved the plat does not mean it intends to take on the right-of-way, right? So that's on the plat as well.
That's included in your motion?
Yes.
Second. Okay, my motion in a second, is there wording clear on it? Alright, all those who are favoring the motion will say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carried.
And I'll get her to word it.
Amber, we just took that one more, uh, I think we got, uh, twenty-five, thirty-six.
Six, yeah, that's the one that.
Oh, that's the layout, okay.
And I know that there were people hunting on, being here for that, so I don't know what you guys.
Well, you can, but it's, it's not a public hearing.
There, so.
It's not a public hearing.
I think you've gotten a couple of letters too, Mr. Chairman, that came in, or we put those in your packets.
Yep.
Those came in yesterday.
Um, let me, I just, but I also don't know where the line goes.
Republican hearing will follow it well.
So, um, it wasn't scheduled till nine-thirty, so I don't know. I'd rather the landowner be here on that one, I think it would be better.
So you didn't know? Give us the discussion on, uh, ten fifteen, the online meeting.
Sure, uh, so some follow-up discussion from the last meeting, did a little bit of research and it came up with a draft, some, some model guidelines, you have them in your packets for your consideration. The idea, I suppose, would be that the chairman would read, potentially read these at the beginning of the, of the meeting, could have them posted online and outside as well in order to communicate them with the public, uh, but they're, they're, they're guidelines, so, uh. Just looking for your input.
This is the one where you, where they said they need a fire plan, they don't have one yet.
No, we're, we're, we're talking about, uh.
That was twenty-three, sixty-six.
No, we're on, uh. We, we, we're waiting for people, so we're down on, uh, the online meeting participation. Bruce has done some research to. And like you said, it'd be something that I or whoever's chair would have to, uh, include in our opening that, uh, how we're gonna handle it. So it's up to the board of, of Fisher Dix. Can we require them through the ordinance to use the chat or a message to put their name and address up to make it more accurate and point to them?
If, if they're not gonna talk, I don't know of anything that requires them to, to sort of register themselves, they could show up to a meeting and sit here anonymously. But I think if we did put in there, if you're going to, if you're going to talk, I think you have to identify yourself with your name and your address, uh, for the minutes, right? And so that, that part of it is, is more of a, is a shall, um.
That's what I was thinking, including it in number three there, that they could type in their name and address.
Uh, well, they're just listening, I guess it's more of a recommendation, uh, as opposed to participation.
Yeah, but it's.
Item three on here, when it says speak only and recognize and give your name and address.
Yes.
If they can actually have them type it in, so it's easier for the, for record. I think is what you're trying to get.
I don't know if that's ever been an issue, you know, usually Brendan misses it, we ask for clarification, we could certainly do that, I don't know if that feature allows them to put their address in.
Well, you can put it in, they can type it in the chat option is what they're saying.
Okay, that, well, yeah, then that's more for me to screw up, but, um, yeah. I mean, manage.
Manage is a bad word.
But yeah.
You can use screw up if you want.
It's a free one.
Alright, is this something that the board would like to, uh, participate in and, uh, we can certainly give it a try?
Or think about it some more, offer me more info.
Well, it's rather cumbersome for you at the beginning of the meeting, that's the bad part. No problem.
And I don't, I guess.
If I threaten now, I can get through it.
I didn't know how, I didn't know how else to sort of explain the ground rules, if somebody has a better idea, that's what I had.
Now, I'm like the state board that I sit on, there's quite a, an opening to, uh, let the public know how we're gonna handle it and so do you, same here.
And there are certain other rules that you might want to mention that would be more applicable for a public hearing and you kind of go through those. I didn't include those on here, but you know, does that make sense, and so for a public hearing, goodness. Guys, there's a meeting going on, hey, guys, there's a meeting going on, shh, please, thank you.
Okay, uh, we already talked about it a while, or do we want to take some type of action? I'm willing to try. I don't think it hurt to try, but if it doesn't work, we always change it.
I approve that we adopt, uh, these guidelines into an ordinance to utilize for online meetings.
Already been approved, Brett.
Mr. Chairman.
Your guys' plans approved. Okay.
Oh.
Thank you.
I don't, I don't know if it has to be an ordinance, um, this is every deal.
Oh, okay, we're good then, okay.
We're good, we'll get it recorded, it'll be a couple nights.
An ordinance contemplates, it's a rule, it has penalty provision and you're gonna fine or put somebody in jail for it. So I think this is more of a resolution and I could certainly put it in resolution form. Uh, you, I think any action that you take is a resolution, so you could adopt it today. Or we could put it in resolution form and you could take formal action on it at your next meeting. Whereas the county commission deems it appropriate and necessary to have some rules of decorum, uh, et cetera, et cetera. We hereby adopt these rules for online meetings, something like that is what it would reflect.
Okay, so can I review my motion?
You're aim.
I would move that, that we ask this outfit to put this in resolution form to be, uh, presented in the next meeting.
Bruce, would you put this in resolution form for the next meeting?
I made a note, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Not sure we need a motion, but.
Okay, my motion in a.
Put some.
My duty granted by Fisher Sleep for, to approve, uh, having Bruce put this in resolution form for us to deal with in the next meeting. All those who are favoring the motion will say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Brendan, I'm okay if I miss a second. Alright, well.
Along kind of these same lines, if I can interject, Mr. Chairman, Greg is working on some technology changes, uh, for the room. And, um, I assume you maybe want to implement those sooner than later. We could certainly include those in the budget for twenty-twenty-six, we haven't done so, so far. But you did have, I think, a hundred thousand dollars in your contingency fund, normally it's fifty thousand, and I think you have all of that left. And so you may want to contemplate spending some of that contingency fund on some of these improvements for the, for the room in terms of screens and so forth. Makes sense? You don't have to decide today, but just give you a heads up on that.
It sounds like Reed's gonna get online, he, he's the guy for that plat, so give him a minute. He said he's gonna log in.
This is the layout one?
Yes, cause he can't, he's not here, he said I can stop and get online.
Alright, well, we'll, uh, we'll take a five-minute break here and wait for the gentleman to get on and then fill in.
Yeah, I'm asking.
Alright.
I'll, I'll, my notes.
That's the one that, uh, requires a fire plan.
Alright, did you get the recording?
Fire plan needed, assess, is that the right one?
I can't hear you.
We're in a break right now, we'll get everybody back in here and we'll do your part, okay?
Good, sounds good.
Follow meaning back to order.
Okay, we did have to start paying some.
Yeah.
Alright, so Reed, um, they are doing the layout plan in front of the county commission this morning and I didn't know if you were coming and your engineer's not here, so. Um, basically just like we did at planning and zoning, this is a very general layout. Um, it's not, they got some comments from planning and zoning and they know that they need to go back and kind of, you know, look at some different things. Um, you guys have received some emails from people, uh, and then we did have at planning and zoning, a couple people, um. Travis allowed a couple to, to voice their opinions and they did and basically, I think some people didn't realize we were maybe just at the layout plan, they, they thought it was a little further along, we weren't there yet. And then, um, Reed, do you want to comment anything on, do you want to give like a quick synopsis of what you are looking at? And they have already received all of the, any of the emails that we have gotten.
Okay, yeah, so I guess with the, the plan that we've got now is just, we're, we've got permission from Mike Short over in the Apple Springs Development to tap into his, um, water, his well, he's drilling a brand-new well, uh, right across from Wild Burger Road from us. And even if that new well doesn't go through, we've got permission to tap into his existing well right now. And, uh, with talking to Anthony, our engineer, he said that that would be more, it'll have more than enough water supplied to support this subdivision. And then he will also let us tap into, um, Apple Springs sewer, um, to allow us to be included in their sewage treatment plant system. Um, and so we'll have water and sewer getting brought into the, into the property. I've gotten ahold of Butte Electric to get rid of the overhead cables, the overhead electric that is hooked up to the current house that sits on the property. And we'll, we'll be trenching that underground and then we'll also have, um, M D U come in with gas. And so we'll, we'll hook up the existing houses on the property right now to, um, water and sewer and gas so that it can get allowed to be on a lot size smaller than two acres. And then we'll, I guess we're focusing on phase one right now, but we'll probably, uh, do the road and just have the water and sewer while we're already trenching it and getting the work done, we'll have it just running all the way down pretty much to where the cul-de-sac would be on phase two so that, um, it'll be ready for us later on.
Sir, could you state your full name and address for the record for us, please?
Uh, yep, full, full name is Reed Alan Feitner. Address is four twelve South Cottage Grove, Miles City, Montana, five nine three zero.
Thank you.
Um, so this is a layout plan, they wanted to get a pretty good general idea of, you know, any concerns you might have, those kind of things, um, between, you know, just any of it. I know the road layout, they are, this is, um, what they've presented to John Bay because originally this unit had come in. But John had asked them, you know, I'd rather see a road that comes through and connects up with that stagecoach's trail at the top.
So it was my first thought and then when I went back to look at it more in detail, I see that.
Yeah, so that's what he, he, originally it was more of a, um, like a long cul-de-sac and John didn't like that. He said I wanted to see it come through. Um, they are in the preliminary stages, so they do have a letter of commitment from, um, from Mr. Short, but he still has to figure, you know, there's, there's a lot of detail that's going to it, can they get the water across the road? What are they gonna do? Um, there was information that just got added over the last couple of days that came in, um, at the meeting. This group from the water dis, or the water board was at the planning and zoning meeting and, and did do a list of concerns that they had. That's gonna be a legal matter between, Mike Short owns it, they have it, they're the district, there, there's a difference there. So they have to figure that out. So they have to figure that out. I don't know if that's really our place to figure that out. But ultimately, they're just starting. So I don't have layout plans for like what the water and sewer is gonna look like. We don't have a lot of that detail yet. We have some, but we don't need it yet, cause this is just the layout plan. Preliminary plot is when we'll have this limited detail.
So all that stuff will have to be answered before we see any kind of plat though.
The preliminary plat, yeah.
We need to have the sewer documents, however they get worked out. We can see the water documents, however they get worked out. We don't have any, any dog in that fight, but we won't approve anything until we have all that information. We won't, we won't see it even, right?
Yep. Cause I, I don't have it.
Till now, I mean, they're just trying to get an idea if this is even feasible.
Let me add, yeah, on this thing.
Suburban residential? Might have been since the beginning.
Yeah.
Since seventy-five.
It's been a long time. I know there's been a lot of back and forth on that. Have some landowners say, well, that was never that way. I can't find that it wasn't that way. We'll put it that way.
Well, the original zoning map is somewhere and I think it's out there. In seventy-five.
It's own suburban residential. It's just that it's never been subdivided. One person owned that whole lot and we have one house on it for, you know, the last thirty years. That's just the way it was.
Okay.
So it, do you guys, I mean, is there any additional concerns, I guess? The, the concerns were working with John Bay to make sure the road is where John wants it for access. I know John is not gonna allow any additional driveways on that Wild Burger stretch here. I'd already said that. So the two that are on here is all that he was willing to do. One of them was an existing driveway. And then one of them is just because it would give better access across from Stagecoach Trail. Anything to do with, you know, the water, the sewer, that kind of stuff. They're gonna have to go through engineering plans and they're gonna have to have documentation from what they figure out amongst their contracts. I'm trying to think. The only other thing I know that there, there's been lots of discussions and concerns on the, with the Wild Burger Road and the access coming off of DOT. I do believe I will send this to the DOT because it is putting more pressure onto that main, you know, entry coming on to the state highway. And I do know at one time the state had said sooner or later, somebody's gonna have to put a turning lane in. I don't know what that sooner or later is. That's kind of up to the DOT to decide when that, you know, when that is there. So those are the things that we're doing already. Reed, is there anything else you had specific questions on or does that kind of generalize what we were at from planning and zoning?
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I would say that that kind of generalizes everything. I know, yeah. I know that with the road, the way it is, that's kind of exactly what John Bay had suggested that we do. And so that's how Anthony drew it up, the engineer. And I know that Anthony's been in contact with, I don't, the fire chief, I guess, to, to figure out what plans we need to do for fire mitigation.
Yep.
Other than that.
The approver denied.
Usually you approve the layout plan just so they know they can go forward with the next step, which should be all the engineering and get all that stuff.
He knows what his obligations are for to provide for us and go further. So it's up to the board if you want to approve the layout.
What was planning and zoning recommendation?
They motioned to approve it. And then obviously what they, they gave a list of concerns, you know, making sure John knew about the access, working on the water and the sewer questions, just they actually have to have those answered with more preliminary plat. And then the design aspects, but they knew that going into it.
And so now we're heading to DOT for it also.
Yeah, they, they already were involved on my end. I usually, anytime we have a new way coming out of a major road, we'll send it to them. Whether they comment on it or not is up to them, but we send it to them just to be safe.
I'll move to approve the layout plan with the conditions that we've listed.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of the layout. Any further discussion? Seeing that, all those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close.
Okay, so Reed, it can move forward. We can work on some of those, you know, it's the detail now and that's where you guys are at, okay?
Good, perfect.
Thank you.
I appreciate everything. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Wood, you're the only one we've got left.
Yep.
We just kind of waited for you. We gotta head for ourselves. So we'll pick up the, the next item. We'll be the second reading. Uh, change of zoning for Mr. Wood. We have the public hearing. Last meeting, we close that, so there won't be any public comment today. It's just up to, up to board for the second reading and the decision from the board.
I have nothing new to add.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it, is there a discussion on it? Okay, seeing that, all those who favor the motion for us will say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. You're ready to go, sir.
Thanks, Brett.
We are going to items from the public. Is there anyone in the room that would like to make any public comments at this time? If you do, if you please stand and state your name and address for the record, as well as those online that will give an opportunity to speak as well. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I know Mr. Gangler planned on coming, but maybe did his mom pass away? So I don't know if his plan.
Well, we're way ahead too.
Yeah, and so, yeah.
We're way ahead of schedule.
I asked him to come early. I suggested he be here by nine, but I know he planned on being here.
Okay, is there anyone online that would like to address the board this morning?
By ten.
Anyone online? Okay, I'm not seeing anything. Again, once again, the body of the audience. Is there, we'll close out for now and we'll probably leave the minister to see if Mr. Gangler shows up. Is there items from commissioners?
I'm gonna try to call him. Notes? Oh.
Oh, yeah, BSO.
BSO.
Who posts the job for the BSO anyway?
He can do that whenever he wants me to.
When does he plan on retiring?
August ten.
Thirty, yeah. Yeah, we should.
And we've done, the more we look at it, the more it makes sense just to keep our own. It's full-time. Be nice to get him out of the hole and in here where people can find him a little easier, but. And I know the Public Commissioners Office would like to not have him there. Still they have a little privacy in their areas, but.
Well, we've got some time to see where we'd like to. Live first.
Yeah.
So, yeah, just to, so we, we posted with the same job description.
Okay, can you get that done?
Anything else from the commissioners?
I, I still would like to see commissioners from areas. I've heard so many, it's really a city organization there. Most of the people on that commissioner are city oriented, other than agriculture oriented. And the city has a city council. We need to have a county commission. You, you don't think so, are you?
So which, which commission, committee are you talking about?
County commission. I think it ought to be the county.
District.
And I, and it, you said that, that you didn't think you'd get anybody to run, but I'd be glad to find somebody in each area that would run.
You could turn that around and say, well, let's just have people from who funds the county. That would be the cities.
Well, yeah, but it isn't, it isn't that way.
Well. I guess I'm okay with the way we're doing it at large, myself. That's my comment.
Well, everybody has to be okay. It's been going that way.
And the challenge is, you know, the districts have to be equal in population. And so drawing those districts up that would accomplish your goals and be equal in population might not be the result that you're looking for.
Yeah, it's probably changed some, but I, I know how it was done before, so I, I can go that direction.
Way back to the day, what were their districts?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I've always been happy.
How far back?
Into the eighties?
Huh?
In, into the eighties.
Really?
That's when.
I'm always.
Car and Tubby Car.
Cause I've, I've been here since ninety-one and it's been at large, so.
That was before that.
Population change.
Yeah, it was early eighties. Tubby Car.
Richard, I'm gonna squeeze by.
I think when sewer first got on.
Sewer. I'm just only gonna do, tell you about being in districts.
Could we call him? Yeah, I just talked to him. He would like to visit with you. So I told him to call him on the phone.
Hmm, oh, okay.
Mr. Gangler?
Oh.
Okay, so we have one more individual that would like to make a public comment. We'll let Bruce call it up and.
I think. Yep. Yeah. More technology.
I don't know, it told me to switch to a microphone and I said no. Randomly.
We'll see if you can hear us.
I said no.
Well, I know, I know the people that ran before in the different districts and that.
Hi, hi, Chris, can you hear us okay?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, Chris, I've got you on speakerphone. We're at the county commission room, so we've got the five county commissioners here and some staff people. It's items from the public. I would refer to Chairman Yui. Yeah, you can go ahead and have the floor, Chris. Please try to limit it to like three minutes.
Yeah. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thanks guys for giving me your time.
Go ahead and state your name and, and address for the record, please.
Christopher Mark Denver, three four four five, Eagan South Road, Spurkis South Borough.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I've got a couple items here. The first one, which is being very concerning is the guy that the name was wrong is, is horrendous right now. Obviously, when you add nineteen houses up the road, above the eleven, originally here, you've got at least two drivers per household. We can do the math and see how much traffic we have. The, the problem that's coming up there is the younger generation of drivers, who looks out there and thinks it's a race track. And I'm very concerned about kids that ride motorcycles on the road, people going for a lot of joggers. We have tons of jet problems on bikes and horses, human horseback drivers. And it's a great, and a road, even a point five. At a cross station, I, I made some promises, so if the human twenty-five, this is on a race track, it's on the road. I took about six of them up and down the road. I know the property moved a lot of spalling, this debate probably, I couldn't do that, so that's fine. So my, my question on this part is if we could get a couple of those signs for the, there's only one sign in the canyon where they make the entrance. Putting another sign up anywhere would be easily seen in both directions. Because I'm not trying to pull these people out. Okay? The other thing is that I need to know if I could get permission to have a professionally built sign that says caution children play or something along those lines. I, I guess they don't make those third counties or houses or cities and stuff.
Okay, I guess Mr. Bay has just joined us, the highway superintendent, so I'm gonna let him maybe field a couple of your questions here. Chris, John, do you want to weigh in on?
Certainly. First of all, no matter where you get your signs, you're not authorized to install signs in the right of way on a county road. So there's a few different statutes that, that address that. Any sign or request for a sign, we would certainly be willing to entertain the idea of putting those up. The county would, would be the ones to put them up and then, then it's a, it's a legal and authorized sign. If you have any ideas, what you would want a sign to say, we would certainly take that, you know, into consideration. But as far as you having a sign made and you having it installed, that is, you can't do that.
Okay, well, I'm happy, John, appreciate it. I, I, I know everybody here has seen a sign that says caution children at play. I know they have, so that's something along those lines I'd like to do.
Well, we don't, we don't personally put a lot of those signs up. I, I think that's a kind of a liability issue. Like, I guess in, in my opinion, if we put a sign up caution children are play or something like that, we're acknowledging that we're letting children play on the road. And I think that's something that we're trying to, to discourage.
But it sounds like the highway department would be willing to work with you on possibly some more speed limit signs, correct? Is that what I'm hearing, John?
We'll certainly, we'll get the speed limit signs.
Couple more signs at least. Some kids, I shouldn't say kids. Somebody defaced the, the sign on the other end of the golf chair, the first mile, the first one of the interstate, and it spilled air, but it's before the bridge. Unfortunately, I live on that straightaway from around the corner by Van Marley's place and, and waiting at his place. And you can hear him stop on it, so they feel bad because it's going by my house. So maybe that's my biggest problem is where I live, but I can't change that.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll let John work on it a little bit for you then. Is that all your concerns this morning, sir?
The second one was two thousand twenty-one, I, in court with the commissioners, asked to have a road paved. And I got petitioned by kind of the eleven residents that were clear through them. Ones, ones moved away, ones passed away, but the consensus is still the same, we'd like to have a road paved. Now I'm asking for double that charge here because I'm writing about the speed limit. And then if I have the road paved, then what, you know? However, the road was merged in two thousand twenty-three. And two thousand twenty-one, the road was supposed to be paved in two thousand twenty-three. And commission a guy that took it off the list because he said it wasn't ready to get paved. And same thing, they put power seven years to road and added some gravel, wanted to cut this path. It's all very much appreciated obviously, but I don't know if that means the road's gonna be paved or not. I think this test was most of the way about this, this situation also. And it was important on the path of one mile of pavement, which well, well, we're sitting down, we don't hear the cost of stuff anymore. But I don't know, my taxes is just about doubled in this canyon in the last four years. And I've been here for many years and I'm just hoping for that, maybe they can consider payment at first mile of road. Again, it was approved once and taken off, so.
Yeah, I guess I'm not aware that it was actually ever approved to be paved.
I, I believe that was on a proposal from the highway department. And after, after discussion, this is Brandon Flanagan. After discussion, I think one of the criteria that was brought up is if you're gonna pave anything, it should, it should go through to somewhere, whether it be Maitland or it be so, some county road that actually doesn't dead end. Cause essentially at that point, we're paving a driveway. But that was a discussion. It, it had been thrown on just as a, as a thought, I think, by the highway superintendent, along with a bunch of other ones that were removed. Once we had a longer discussion on what, what maybe should be a criteria for paving and what shouldn't.
Yeah, I didn't actually look back in the last time that I was here to meet with the board, but there again, I'm, I'm just a citizen here.
I'm good friends with commissioner, with the ex-commissioner, current Senator Dibber. And his, his methodology, the way that he would say things to, I didn't always agree with the way they were worded because I don't believe that he had it, that there was an intent by him to have that paved. I think he, he used that wording just to make it more, more digestible for some folks. I, I hate to, I hate to put words in his mouth, but every now and then he would, there would be something that came out that he and I, I thought were, were in agreeance with. And it's like, I don't, I don't know why we're saying that that way when you just should say no.
Well, I don't have to tell me, I grew up with the guy.
Yeah, and I thought, I thought you had.
Well, well, certainly, it sounds like we can help you with the signs, Mr. Gangler, but that's probably the extent of, of that for today.
Okay, well, there again, we still have to have a page of when the road outside here. I don't think you guys are giving John Bay of the highway department enough money, so I'm looking to give them a raise.
All right, thank you, sir.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah.
Bye.
Okay, one more time, is there anyone in the body of the room or the public that's online that would like to speak? Not seeing anything in, any more commissioners for comments. So now I would suggest.
Motion to adjourn?
Adjourn, yes.
I do.
Okay, we are adjourned.